Testing, testing, testing. Testing, 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 one, two, three. Call the meeting door, everyone please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The rest group, please call the room. Here.
Here.
Here. All right, move to item number two, public comment. All questions and comments must be directed to the mayor. Each speaker will be given three minutes to comment. Each speaker will be allowed one opportunity to speak. Anyone has anything, please come forward. Would you please state your name for the record?
Judy Kevler. Ms. Mayor, I am. Did not have an opportunity to attend the town hall meeting, but I did have an opportunity to see the videotape of it. And I'm sure you have access to the videotapes as well as I and everybody else does. There didn't seem to be any content whatsoever on a political level. And I think you need to rethink the decision not to allow them to use the billboard to say that there's going to be another meeting and what date and time it is. Secondly, the accounts payable, page two, down near the bottom. The Spyglass Group consulting fee, $4,680. The same group, flat project fee, $750. A total of $5,430 if my math is correct. I'd like to know what that's for. And was it approved by the board? And that's my questions.
All right. For one moment for the next one, if you would. Page two. On your answer for Spyglass, we have lots of vendors, so I couldn't tell you exactly what this is, we'll have to look into it. In fact, I can't even find page two, which one you're talking about, so we'll send we'll send this into okay. What's that? Oh, okay. Yeah, it just says consulting fee for the police department, so we'll have to take a look into it. I can give you an answer on that one. And then for the other one, thank you for your comments. I've taken into consideration and it's worth our stand. All right, next.
My name is Jackie Blaze. I've lived in Sauk Village for almost 46 years. I didn't come to the meetings before because I had to work two jobs. I still have a hard time paying my bills. Now I'm paying other people's bills because they are sue happy and FOIA happy. There are three people that have run up the bills for lawyers because they just like to cause trouble. Well, I for one, speaking for myself, am tired of it. These three people should be made to pay for their own unnecessary lawyer fees and FOIA fees. They are the reason the village has a hard time paying their own bills. I will I will give you two months and then I want to know how much Joe Wizawati, Francine Anderson, and Bernice Brewer have caused the village in unnecessary personal lawsuits and repetitious FOIAs. This money spent for these this money spent for my taxes that could be paying our village bills. Sauk Village bills have been lowered a lot within the past four years, but they could be even lower more if there were not so many of these people running them up. I would also like to know how many businesses did not come to Sauk Village because of Joe Wizawati's face page. He is not a reporter and he does not live in Sauk Village. So why is he allowed to use the Sauk Village logo? Thank you.
Pat Couch. This is, I would like to address this to all the candidates that are running for office, if I might.
You can address it to me.
Okay, to you. But just to take into consideration, anyone that is running for office. This past weekend, on Saturday morning about 11:00 a.m., I'm in my pajamas, watching TV, and I hear loud voices coming from outside. I open my door, I see two cars, one parked in front of my house, another in the street, a woman with her talking to the individuals in the car. So I stepped out because it was loud and I thought, you know, first of all, the one car is parked illegally and the other car, after discussion with this individual, went on down the street. So when I saw the lady going to the neighbor's house, I saw her come back across out of the neighbor's house, start down 221st Street. So I said, excuse me, ma'am. She ignored me. I said, excuse me, ma'am. And again, she avoided me. The third time I said it, I said, excuse me, you're parked illegally. Well, the tirade that I received for trying to help this woman, telling her she's parked illegally, evidently she didn't see the sign, which is just halfway down by my driveway. So she continued to park there and yelled at me, cursed at me, told me it's not my effing street, she can park wherever she effing wants to. And I said, but ma'am, there is this, don't you call me ma'am. I didn't have a clue who this individual was, I don't believe I know who she is, but I did see the shirt she was wearing, which I won't address by name, but you know who I'm talking about. But that so I feel that that individual, if she's parked illegally, she got upset with me because I'm trying to tell her she's parked illegally. She started yelling at me, well, call your police. So I said, okay, fine, I did. The police came, but before they got there, she evidently, she started back down the street. She came back and got in her car, rolled down her window and started obscenities at me again and said, call your effing police because I'm going to back up illegally and go down the street, which she did. So when the police got there, they looked, came over and talked to me. And luckily, there were two other witnesses that saw this. The one individual came over and said, what was wrong with that woman? I said, well, she evidently has a problem with me. But that's okay, I don't care. She was breaking the law by where she was parked. I was trying to tell the lady, you're parked illegally. So when your candidates are running for office, tell your workers to look where they're parked. Make sure you're legal before you do anything. Thank you, Mr. Burgess.
All right, next.
My name is Barbara Sterns and I've been a resident of the village for 59 years. My husband and I have raised three sons in town. Two graduated from Bloom Trail, one, the last one, from Milliana Christian. The oldest two boys went in the Marine Corps immediately after high school. One served in Desert Storm and the second in the Persian Gulf. So if for no other reason than from those two boys, I know what an officer and a gentleman really is like. My third son is a lieutenant on the fire department in the village. And my husband worked for Public Works for 30-plus years and was cupmaster of PAC-152. And he resided in Sauk Village for 55 years at the time of his death. We've seen so many changes in the village, good and bad during this time. There were bad times in the 60s when we had a lot of empty houses then. The past few years, though, have been the worst I've seen. The manner in which elected officials have spoken to each other during committee and board meetings borders of slander and it's certainly inappropriate amongst adults, even more so when there are young people in the audience. Last week, trustee Tate made a comment at the end of the meeting and I agree with you 1,000% on what you said. I don't recall what you said verbatim, but it was to the effect that name-calling and fighting needs to end now. And I agree with you at least 1,000% on that. It's very important that it needs to be done in here amongst adults. But when you're out and about with the village residents, it's probably even more important that there is no name-calling, threats, foul language because you are a village trustee or whatever when you leave this building also. After the election two years ago, I was standing outside the back door in the village hall after a board meeting, talking with other senior women. A trustee came out the door and was asked a question by a friend of mine in a very calm and friendly manner. This trustee proceeded to swear and cuss at all of us for several minutes. Then as he turned to walk away, he made threats to us and against us. So I am hoping that we will not be subjected to this again in the future, which means I hope trustee Tate's biased by what he said last week and does not ever threaten us again.
Next.
Right wing, 1633, 216, please. I think we had enough. But I want to say this, on the second Saturday of February, I will be speaking at our church crossroad downtown. Every one of you is invited. This subject is, who and what is a man? I would like for you all to come, that includes trustees, no passing out, no political business. That would be not allowed there. But I would like to see you all come there. Second thing is this, when we stand up here all the time and be accusing each other of what we're doing, I asked some people before, when they say about their money and everything, what is missing from up there on that platform that we used to see every night here? And how much money have it saved? What is missing? You don't see the lawyer up there. So the mayor went to work and took care of that business. He cut down on the budget that we had. I mean, the different things that you do, look to me like trustees, whether you like each other or don't like each other. Don't show it to me, I don't want to see it. When I come to this meeting, I come to hear about the business of the village. I don't want to hear nothing about John Hillary this or nothing like it. But you're coming to the point of where, I think when we come to this meeting, we all expect to show that it's not what this is about. It's about taking care of the business of this village. Now, things that you do outside there, hey, that's your business. But I still like to close with this, that I would like to see all men, but I still repeat this, there will be no political stuff. This is all about who and what is a man. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing that, we'll move to item number three. Reports of departments, committees, and commissions. Department of Fire, Department 911 Commission, Chief Stoffrager.
Thank you, Mayor Bor. Over the past two months, the fire department responded to 88 calls. Three ambulance assists, 18 automatic fire alarms, one car fire, one CO, two dryer fires, six gas leaks, two illegal arms, 17 lift assists, two mutual aids out of town, eight ambulance police assists, two spout gas, 12 vehicle accidents, one full arrest, one still firing creek, and one change of corners. On the better half, our new fire truck is in its final stage of being finished. We have about two weeks left. We'll be going up on February the 6th for the final inspection. Hopefully, a couple of days after that, it'll be brought to our station. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. The police department's report, Police Kowalski, he's not here tonight. He's attending a wake in Bloomingdale for a police officer, Raymond Anthony Merle, who passed away in duty. They're having a walkthrough for police officers, so officers across the state are attending that tonight. I will cover a couple of things in his report for the board, the village clerk. I'll give her a copy, she'll make copies and you can all have his report. I know there's a couple of things that are probably on the minds of the residents and that's the robberies we've had at the US Bank. I'll read his report when it comes to that. First one occurred on 12/29/2016 at approximately 2:00 p.m., two black males. Subjects both approximately six feet entered the US Bank branch located on the corner of Torrance Avenue and Sauk Trail. Sauk Village, Illinois, both suspects wore hats and masks and were armed with handguns. The offenders demanded cash from the tellers and vaulted the counters to grab cash from the drawers. Within a short time, they were gone and fled in a waiting vehicle, a silver Chevy Impala, that was headed southbound on Torrance from the area. Officers responded to the scene, canvassed the area with negative results. The FBI was called to assist with the investigation. The vehicle was later found on the side street of Dyer, Indiana, burned out. The matter is being worked jointly with the FBI. To date, the FBI is following up on several positive leads on this matter. Second one was on 1/20/2017, the US Bank located, again on Sauk Trail and Torrance Avenue, was robbed by a male black late twenties. The offender took money and fled the scene on foot. The officer responded, located the subject matching the description in the area of Sauk Trail and Orion. A show-up with the offender was conducted and a positive ID was made of the offender who was placed into custody. The FBI was called and filed federal bank robbery charges on the offender since this is a federally assured institution. If you've seen the articles, there's been articles in the papers concerning this. I will tell you, though, that as mayors, we've seen a increase in bank robbery, especially in 2016, across the whole entire South suburbs and in the Chicagoland area. So they did catch the one, the other two are still at large. So we'll make sure the trustees get a copy of his report. All right, move to reports of officers. Got the mayor's report, I have quite a few things tonight we're going to talk about here. First of all, the village board should have received excuse me, one second, let me grab my report. Village Board should have received the recommendations from the village attorney for the license agreement to access the grade crossing data and the motor fuel tax forms for IDOT, which IDOT requires the village to approve these forms every year to receive MFT funds. So those recommendations from Jim Zarneck, village engineer. Tonight, I have two proclamations, first one we're going to read. First proclamation is a proclamation honoring Ed Pazel for his years of dedication and service to Sauk Village and the Southland. Whereas, as a lifelong resident of the South suburbs, which included attending Bloom Township High School, Ed was eventually inducted into the school's Hall of Fame. And whereas, Ed Pazel continued his education I'm sorry, educational growth with a bachelor of science degree, history and political science in 1971, and a master of arts degree in history in 2000, I'm sorry, 1973, both of which were bestowed upon him by Illinois State University. And whereas, Ed worked as the principal and teacher of the Sauk Village's St. Mark's Lutheran Church for a number of years. And whereas, Ed served one term as Sauk Village trustee before being elected the youngest mayor in Illinois' history in 1977, and serving for three terms. And whereas, Ed was instrumental in obtaining funding for the construction of the Sauk Village Community Center and Senior Center. And in the year of 1989, the village of Sauk Village found it fit that that was the place where the community gathers by naming for a person who has done so much for the community. And whereas, Ed's commitment to Sauk Village residents was evident through his involvement by serving both School District 206 and Community Consolidated Schools District 168, Sauk Village Chamber of Commerce, Sauk Village Christmas Basket Fund, and Sauk Village Economic Development Committee. And whereas, Ed Pazel began his tenure as only the second executive director of the South Suburban Mayors and Managers Association in May of 2000. During his term as executive director, Ed was a catalyst for literally tens of millions of dollars in grant funding coming to benefit of member municipalities and their collective 700,000 citizens. And whereas, Ed's involvement through the entire Southland community by serving as director of the Third Airport Information Clearinghouse, participating in various planning, legislative, and transportation committees and commissions, earned him many well-deserved awards and accolades. And whereas, the village of Sauk Village Cookin' Will Counties will pass a resolution honoring Ed W. Pazel with an honorary street designated on this date, January 24th, 2017. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and the board of trustees of the village of Sauk Village and its residents, thank Ed W. Pazel for his invaluable service for many years, not only to Sauk Village, but to the entire Southland community. Be it further proclaimed that we wish you well on your retirement and may God bless you as you par tyan proclaim this day, the 24th of January, 2017. Now, there is a, South Suburban Mayors and Managers is having an event for Ed on his retirement. We will present him with his proclamation at that event. Ed could not be here tonight. So just so we know, everyone knows he will be presented with a regular proclamation and everything from the village of Sauk Village at that event. Second proclamation tonight is a proclamation, Sauk Village School Choice Week. Whereas, all children in the village of Sauk Village should have access to the highest quality education possible. And whereas, the village of Sauk Village recognizes the important role that effective education plays in preparing all students in Sauk Village to be successful adults. And whereas, quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Sauk Village. And whereas, the village of Sauk Village and the surrounding communities are home to a variety of high-quality public and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children, in addition to families who educate their children in the home. And whereas, educational variety not only helps to diversify sorry, diversify our community, our economic economy, but also enhances the vibrance of our community. And whereas, Sauk Village has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children. And whereas, School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective education, no options. Now therefore, I, David Hanks, do hereby recognize January 22nd through the 28th, 2017, as Sauk Village School Choice Week, and I call this observance to the attendance of all of our citizens. Next we have all right, next thing I have is the collector's report. Now, trustees should have a copy of it for September, October, and November. So we'll start with September 2016, property taxes, $43,760.51. Other taxes were $294,930.22. Licenses and permits were $9,425. Fees and services were $256,399.69. Grants were $116,354.51. Transfers of $10.24. Miscellaneous of $27,013.81. For total revenue for the month of September of $747,893.98. All right, collector's report for October 2016. Property taxes were $1.62. Other taxes were $126,686.37. Licenses and permits were $8,737. Fees and services were $180,335.36. Grants were $16,239.34. Transfers were .34. And miscellaneous was a negative of $54,64.13. Total revenue for the month of October was $277,335.90. Collector's report for November 2016. Property taxes were $146,457.36. It's a little bit more than October, which was only $1.62. Other taxes were $156,267.38. Licenses and permits were $7,943. Fees and services were $292,501.92. Grants were $21,264.67. There was nothing under transfers. Miscellaneous was $41,027.79. Total revenue for the month of November was $665,462.12. That's collector's reports for September, October, and November. Just go check real quick. That said, we'll move to village clerk, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to have Robert Brown step up, come to the front corner of the meeting online. Robert Brown is our someone you should know today. I just met Robert back in November and he impressed me, so I wanted to honor him with a someone you should know. Face the evidence, thank you, Robert. Robert is a 12-year-old Rickover Junior High student who has lived in Sauk Village for 10 years. Robert has attended both Wagner and Strasburg Elementary Schools. One year ago, Robert asked his mother what he could do to help homeless people. Robert's vision was to feed and clothe the homeless for the winter. Robert's mom, Redana, started raising money in order to provide homemade food and desserts as well as soft drinks. At first, Robert only had the help of friends and family. Robert now has a GoFundMe page under the name "Robert's Feeding the Homeless." Robert and his mom make trips twice a month to the Chicago area such as 18th Street and Canal, Lower Whacker Drive, and Tent City, which is Wilson and Lawrence Avenue. Redana is a private-duty nurse who uses her hobby of extreme couponing to make sure Robert can fulfill his dream of feeding as many homeless people as possible. Robert is a gifted and caring young man, as well as an honor roll student and Boy Scout with Troop 150. as well as an honor roll student and Boy Scout with Troop 152. Robert puts the needs of others before himself. Robert spent his November birthday hosting a community harvest celebration with the Robert's No Excuse Foundation in the Sauk Village Community Center. The entire community was invited to participate. Robert hopes to make this an annual event. Robert is a stellar example of how a young man who not only makes a difference, but also encourages those around him to dream and recruit others to fulfill their dream. I want everybody to please say thank you to Robert. Thank you for coming, Robert. Over the holiday break, there were two people that passed away that were very involved residents in Sauk Village. The first one being, actually, I should say three, I'm sorry. First one being Ed Sullivan. I didn't know Ed back in the day when he was politically involved in the village, but the last few years, he became a very good friend of my family, and particularly with my husband. And sometimes I would get daily phone calls from Ed, maybe even three or four times in the same day. Ed was special. He cared a lot about the village. I think the hardest part for Ed when he found out he was sick was that he may or may not be here at the next election, and that broke his heart. I think sometimes he was more concerned about that than he was his own health. Well, unfortunately, fortunately, he was able to move home with his son before he passed. That was one of his goals. Him and his wife, who was also sick, were able to move back to California and be with their son. Unfortunately, at the same time, shortly after, I understand, his wife Diana also passed. So these are two residents of Sauk Village, and I wanted you to keep their families in their prayers. I didn't have enough information to prepare Someone You Should Know, but I know that's two people that I just met within the last few years that became good friends really quickly. Also, I understand someone I never met, but also is near and dear to my heart. Interim clerk Mary Jacobs passed away. I don't know Mary. I didn't have any dealings with her, but she stepped in as the interim clerk when Nancy McConnelley passed away while she was in office. Again, I don't have enough information. I understand that she was also very dedicated. She was actually working in the front office, and she stepped up and took on the job as the interim clerk. So also, I'd like you to keep the family of Mary Jacobs in your prayers as well. Those are three people that over the holiday season that were near and dear to Sauk Village who unfortunately passed away. There's no meeting next week. Next week is the 5th Tuesday, so we do not meet on the 5th Tuesday unless we have a special meeting. Last week, the table and the microphone were missing, and this week, the table and the microphones are back, so thank God for that. There's 10 more weeks till the next election. There's seven more meetings before the next election, and it seems like every chance people get, they bring up three things. They bring up the minutes. Some people do anyway. An event that happened on Veterans Day that I had no party to, which I'm being blamed for, and the trip to Washington, which I'm not going to use it by the name that a certain person has given it. And I just wanted to point out to everybody that because I don't speak at committee meetings, I thank Trustee Williams for doing her best to defend me, but it doesn't, I don't really need defending. I've said it many times. When minutes are passed out to the board and the department heads on Friday, Saturday, or prior to the meeting, they're draft minutes. They're minutes that are prepared in draft form. I will start from now on making sure that the watermark is imposed on the minutes so they know what's the draft of the minutes and what's the final minutes. Just like I give the department heads and the board an opportunity to read the draft minutes to see if there's any changes to be made, I do the same. I proofread the minutes before they become final. Normally, when there's a typo or an incomplete sentence, as was pointed out last week, that is corrected when the draft set of minutes is proofread. Before those minutes are placed in the file, which is a permanent file, they are corrected. What I don't understand is how people who have been elected to serve the residents would rather spoke note for the minutes rather than point out what the deficiencies in the minutes are. The minutes are one of my primary jobs, and I do take a lot of time to do the minutes, and I take a lot of pride in the minutes. And I think it says more about the person who refuses to speak to me and refuses to take my phone calls and my emails and does not tell me when there's a situation that should be corrected before the minutes are put in a permanent record. These minutes are kept on file for 100 years. I won't be here to see it, but if anybody ever wants to know what happens, it should be right. Also, there was a challenge. My petitions were challenged. I have, I've been hesitant to say anything because while it was in litigation, which we're not supposed to speak about things while they're in litigation, I was hesitant to say anything. Someone got up to the microphone earlier today and talked about frivolous lawsuits. This is just another case of a frivolous lawsuit. My petitions were challenged because it stated that I owe money from the trip that I took to Washington where I fundraised from a vendor or two. It is clearly not, the money was clearly not, the check was clearly not made out to the village of Sauk Village. That check was made out to Debbie Williams. I don't owe that money to the village of Sauk Village. But the person who wanted to find me as unqualified to be clerk decided to challenge my petitions based on the fact that I owed the village money. Two out of three people on the electoral board, Mayor Hanks and Trustee Williams, denied that allegation. Trustee Burgess found me guilty on that allegation. The other allegation was that I notarized my own signature on a petition, and they wanted to invalidate all my petitions where I had notarized them. The law is, I was not validating my signature. I was notarizing, I'm sorry. I was notarizing the signature of the person who circulated the petition. Again, frivolous objection, and two out of three electoral board members denied that objection. Again, Mayor Hanks, Trustee Williams beg. Trustee Burgess found me guilty, even though the attorneys said what the law clearly stated. The third thing that the person, Francine Anderson, objected to my petitions was that my name Debbie was also included on my petitions. This is the third time I'm running for office, and every time I run for office, my name has been Deborah, Debbie Williams on the ballot. And thankfully, because the challenge was overturned, I will be on the ballot. The challenge is over, and I am officially a candidate in the next election. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. To item number five, trustees and board committees. First of all, we've got senior in the Befication Committee, or we're in the Befication Committee first. There will be no Befication Committee meeting in January 2017. Holiday decorations have been packed away in an orderly fashion, and the committee is always looking for additional members and/or financial support to keep programs alive and thriving. Thank you to all those that assisted the committee and cheered them on. That's the Befication Committee. This is the senior committee. Don't push your luck. Medicare fraud can happen to anybody. There's a fraud prevention fair for seniors, which is sponsored by Sauk Suburban Senior Services of Cafeteries and the Illinois Senior Medicare Patrol Program at Age Options. And it will be held on Friday, March 17th, from 10:00 to noon. It's being held in Cayman City at 1700 Memorial Drive. Talks about play Fraud Bingo. There's learn useful tips to prevent, detect, and report Medicare fraud. Get information on fraud from a variety of consumer protection agencies. Bring your old Medicare summary notice or other personal documents to be shredded. And secure drop boxes will be on site. Again, this is March 17th, 2017. That's village clerk, if you can get that on the alert. And let's see here. Got Age Options is inviting seniors to 2017, let's lay the breakfast. And see here, there's multiple locations. I'll let you put this out. January, let's see. Like January 17th, first one, 27th, South Cayman City. That's, I think, is this Friday. The first is in Northfield. The sixth is in Burbank, and the 17th is in Elk Grove. So I'll give that to you, you get that poster. That said, move to Parks and Recs Committee, Trustee Jones.
February 2nd will be the Parks and Recs Committee meeting, 7:00 here in the village hall. This Saturday, from 11:00 to 2:30, will be open gym. So all kids are welcome. Under the age of nine should be accompanied by an adult. We're working, some of the things we're working on in the committee are the Spring Dance. We should be having a Glow Party. This will be for the ages, the school ages of sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. We're still working on some of the details. There will be flyers passed out. And we're also working on some details for Summer Camp. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee.
Yes, yes.
All right. Thank you. Move time to C, Public Works, Trustee Burgess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, there was a question last week that was asked to the mayor about certain things with the Public Works, and I contacted Mr. Weller and found out the following items. First of all, branch pickup. I talked to him, and he says the branch pickup will be starting in late April, early May of this year. The dates, he hasn't finalized, but you can look for it to happen at that time. And the second, someone in Lincoln Metals had asked about the storm sewer in Lincoln Metals. I was, I spoke wrong. It's not filled with asphalt. It is filled with gravel right now. And as soon as the concrete factory is opened, they will be purchasing concrete to finalize that fill in Lincoln Metals. And also, the lights at the beginning of Lincoln Metals right there, as you come in, they're still pulling wire. They have to pull wire, I guess, from one place to another, and it's going to take a little time. And they're going to coordinate that because I think there's some other things involved that they have to do. But that's why the light is still out, in case anyone knows or anyone has any questions about it. That's why the light out at the entrance way of Lincoln Metals is still out, but they're working on that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee, for following up on those answers. Move to Housing and Government Committee, trustee Teigs.
The, there's a housing workshop scheduled for March 23rd. We have not confirmed it, but it is scheduled. I've spoken with individuals that's going to do the workshop, so possibly, we can go through with that. And part of Intergovernmental, I received information from a trustee in one of our surrounding communities who provided information that he's used for the housing project in his community. So I would like him to come and speak to us, the people that are present. Give us ideas of what we can do regarding reducing our housing situation. And we had, I think, I recall, two individuals that did buy homes in Sauk Village. That's a small number, if you just say two. That's a major number. If we're talking about there were only 15 or 20 people there that came to this workshop. So for March 23rd, it's a possibility, a good possibility, we're going to have another workshop, and we'll have a guest speaker there who will be a trustee in another community who's going to give us some ideas and direction on what we should do to reduce our housing vacancies. That is my report.
Thank you, trustee. Public Safety and Orange Review Committee, trustee Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple items tonight. First off, I'm going to need to call for a reading for my subcommittee for February 2nd, 7:00 p.m. here at the village hall. Then, following committee night, I would like to be placed on the agenda to speak to the board. And then the other item that, several months ago, the dangerous animal section of our animal control ordinance was a challenge, and it was put to us to look it over and do some changes. I brought it back to the board a couple of times. The last time I brought it back, they asked for a full review and see what complies with state, county, and so forth. I finally, I got everything back from the county. Got everything from Dr. Alexander, and I got everything back from the state. And we looked over ours. Chief Police has made changes. After I review this with my committee, I will give a copy in case the board, I have no problem giving you a copy tomorrow. I'll make it up, give you, you look at it over. It's, it's almost mirrors the county and state. And it's something that we had to get out there because we do have some animals running around there. Pretty mean. And it does spell it out point-blank what an officer can do. And if a president, and a president can do if it's bitten, and if a animal is declared to be a vicious animal, it spells it out very clearly. I must say that this is a pretty good document, and I will present this to the subcommittee and then to the board. If you guys would like to have a copy tomorrow, I'll put it all in your box. It's not going to change. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Move to Neighborhood Watch Committee, trustee Linda Washington-House.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to remind everyone, as usual, we will have our next Neighborhood Watch meeting on the second Monday of February, which will be February the 13th, at 7:00 at the fire station. Neighborhood Watch Committee is very excited about our next event that's coming up, and it's going to be on Friday, March 10th, at Rinkover School at 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. The doors are open at 5:30. You don't want to miss this. The flyers are in the back already asking for donations or anyone that want to participate on the program. I put it out because a lot of residents will, have shared with me that they do know people that like to come to these type of events, or they may want to sponsor in some kind of way. Our theme is unity in the community. And I think that our committee came up with a great theme. We do need unity in the community. Unfortunately, there are people that bask in people's misfortune. There are people, whether they're your neighbor or whoever they may be, that people can find out that you could be going through something, and they bask in that. Oftentimes, these people are even labeled as Christians that laugh at things that you're going through or hardships that people may be facing. Whether it's racial with the last presidential election, there's a lot of racism throughout the entire country, as you see on the news. There are villages, there are cities, there are different states that are having mass protests. So we want to bring unity in Sauk Village. Basically, we have reached out to the schools. They're all participating. We've reached out to the local churches and ministers. They all have an opportunity to submit to me in the committee, either my co-chair, trustee Myers, if they want to have their choir or praise dancers or whatever they do in their churches. We want to highlight Sauk Village, and we do have talent outside of Sauk Village that's coming as well. We're excited about having Stella Award winner, Darryl King from WYCA. She is excited to come to Sauk Village. If you don't listen to her on the radio, she is a delight to hear. So I just want to encourage everyone to let your neighbors know about the concert. It's free to the community. There's no charge, and we are looking forward to having an absolutely fabulous evening with Willie the Entertainer, who does a fantastic job of an impersonation of Michael Jackson. He's been on The Ellen Show. He's been on Good Morning America, Wendy's City Live. He's been on so much. He's only like a fifth grader, but he is phenomenal. When we brought him last time when we did the play, the children loved him, and he signed autographs and took pictures. So we were able to secure him to come back. And when we announced it at the school board meeting last night, the school board members were glad to know were glad to know that we were able to get him back and they're also looking forward to meeting and greeting Darryl King. So I just wanted to invite all of you, especially those that are videotaping and going to put it up on YouTube, to come to Saw Village. We are doing some great things out here in Saw Village. We are promoting unity in our community. And that concludes my report.
Thank you trustee. Move to Energy, Budget, Finance, and Community Relations Committee trustee Rosie Williams-Bay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. Number one, based on Ms. Cass' question, I did reach out to the fire, I'm sorry, the police chief and the finance director about your question. I haven't heard back from them yet, but as soon as you said that, I did email them both. So if I have an answer by the end of the meeting, I'll let you know. Also, there was a meeting yesterday with Bloom Trail regarding the Student Government Day and the Village Sticker Program. And they are extremely excited to work with us. So I'm happy to say that for the 60th anniversary, we will have a Student Government Day. We have left the criteria of how they pick the students completely up to them, but it was agreed by both parties that we should focus on ninth grade Saw Village students, which was great for us that they agreed to that because that means that the students who actually were not able to participate in Student Government Day because of all the hoopla last year will now have the opportunity to participate this year. So that's really great. And then the art class, the art teachers are very excited to work on the Village Sticker Program. So that was really great to hear from yesterday. Also, the Saw Talks are on the back table. I know the village clerk made an announcement before the meeting, but in case anybody walked in, the newest Saw Talk is on the back table. The Budget and Finance Committee has met this month and we spoke about the third quarter. And it's our request that the finance director be present at a committee meeting to go over the numbers, the actuals with the board. And to that note, I understand that at the town hall meeting that trustee Burgess had, there was a question that was brought up about the Budget and Finance Committee meetings and stating that they should be open to the public and why are they not open to the public? And are there minutes taken and things of that nature? And unfortunately, the person who I understand asked the question is not here. So I guess I will have to reach out to her personally to give her this answer. But just for anybody who was a part of the meeting or anybody who would like to know this answer, this answer should have been said at the meeting. But all committees that are held by a trustee in any capacity have to be, if it's a sanctioned committee, it has to be an open meeting, which means there needs to be an agenda posted at least forty-eight hours before the meeting and it has to be an open meeting. Okay? So it has to state, the agenda has to state the time, the date, and what's on the agenda and anybody is available to come, anybody is able to come to that meeting. So we do post our agendas, we, they are posted properly within the time period. The meetings are here. They do vary in date and time. Part of that is because, you know, some committees have them like every third Thursday or however that works. Ours vary in date and time based on the content that we're talking about. I know you guys have heard me with my reports before, sometimes the finance director isn't able to get us like the aging report. If that's on our agenda, we might have to move the meeting back, something like that. Sometimes we have the finance director there, sometimes he's not available. So it all depends upon people's schedule. But once we are committed to a date and time, it is posted and anybody is available to attend. And I think there was a question about minutes. And yes, minutes are taken as minutes should be taken in every committee meeting. And that being said, I'm sure you'll be fired, in which case I welcome back. And that's all. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee.
Trustee Williams, did you look at all of the tape that was there? Because when I explained to the person that asked that question, I told them that your meetings generally are during the day in the afternoon and everyone is, everyone is invited. I never said that it was a closed meeting or there could not be any participation. I did state that there's an agenda and, but I did tell them that usually your meetings, which I do see a lot of times, are during the day, one or two in the afternoon. So as far as stating something different, as far as me commenting that there weren't any minutes taken, that, that never said that there weren't any minutes. I did say that there was an agenda and I did say that it was held during the day and they would have to come up here to find out when it, because I don't know when the meetings are, because like you just stated, that is sometimes it's this afternoon or there's different times and dates that you may have, but they can come up here and find out at the Village Hall. So that's, that's what I stated. And the person, I guess they just wanted to know, was it an open meeting and can any one attend? I told them yes.
I, I'm sorry if I misspoke, but I didn't say that you had, you had made those comments. I said that a resident had asked the questions, if it was an open meeting and if there were minutes conducted and if residents could come and see. And I didn't look at the tape. I don't, I don't look at the tape of the town hall meetings, I don't look at the tape of the meetings. But I was informed during the meeting, I was informed that somebody had a question. And I did try to tell that person who was in here to tell that person that answer then during the meeting. And I understand that that wasn't necessarily conveyed in public.
Okay.
So I wanted to make sure that anybody who had any questions or anything, yes, there's minutes, it's open, there's an agenda, anybody's able to attend. And we do discuss everything. And everything that we do discuss, another thing that I guess was brought up, everything we discuss that needs to have any action on it, we don't take any action by ourselves. We present that to the board, like you'll see with like the budget finance policy, anything like that, that's presented to the board. And like I said, last time we spoke, our last topic of discussion was the third quarter budget. And it's our recommendation that the finance director does come and explain the actuals to the board. So that, this is our request for that.
All right. Thank you. Move to new business. As for a motion to approve all accounts payables and disbursements from December 14, 2016 through January 24, 2017, according to Saw Village policies, there are motion to approve. Got a motion, is there a second?
Sorry.
Got a motion, a second? Any questions or comments?
Question.
Trustee.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I tried to, I was here to try to find out Monday and I couldn't find a couple of answers because the people involved weren't here. But I do, and I see Mr. Fairman is not here, I don't know who can answer this question, but I wanted to know, first of all, how much of the water fund money went into this accounts payable? How much did we take out of the water fund to complete this accounts payable? I was trying to find that out. I couldn't, no one could answer that question. Secondly, I saw where it says immediate checks. What is, what, okay, South Suburbs Mayor's and Managers pays with retirement. What does that mean? I mean, is, are we, are we purchasing something for $500? Are we donating $500s there? A luncheon that we're buying tickets for $500? Which, can anybody answer that?
I can answer that one.
Okay.
Mayor's and Managers are putting on a retirement and they've asked all communities to give $500 to help pay for that, so.
Are we, are you, who's going to the retirement party?
I will be there.
So how many people are going from your board or from yourself?
I don't know, I can find out.
No, I'm talking about if anyone else wants to go, do they have to pay or is it included in that?
I can find out. I don't, I got the invite as a mayor to attend.
I believe that, you don't mind that. Everybody's invited, it's free. That's why the, I'm sorry. Municipalities are actually chipping in, not only on the dinner, but on his gift. And it's open to anybody. I'm surprised you as a trustee didn't get an email. I don't know how they invited people, but I know that if you call South Suburban Mayor's and Managers, you better do it quickly because I think his dinner is like the first week of February. But that's why we prepared the proclamation tonight. There's going to be a book of proclamations from all the neighboring towns and what you also see later in the agenda, the street sign that we're going to be honoring him with. Everybody's doing something different. But I wasn't in charge of inviting people, but I will tell you, you may still be able to get an RSVP in if you call South Suburban.
When did, when did you guys find out about this? I mean, when was the village notified that there was a dinner and whatever? I mean, I see we paid the 500, but when was it notified that we could have been able to be there so we, we wanted to be? Because like you just stated, it's next week or probably week after and it's probably, if it's going to be at South Suburban Mayor's and Managers on 174th Street, there's limited space. So I was just wondering, when the village found out that they could inform the trustees that if they wanted to attend?
That was never conveyed for us to invite anybody. It is up to the South Suburban Mayor's and Managers to invite people to their event. I was informed when I was asked to provide a proclamation or a resolution to be inserted in the booklet. So that's all I have on that subject.
I received an email along with probably the other seventy-some mayors inviting the mayors.
So, okay, basically what I'm saying is, yes, you got invited, but I'm just wondering when, now that you're saying that everyone's invited, they can come, but.
Well, the village clerk said that? I, I don't know for sure.
Just now.
I know she just said so.
What I said, what, I don't want everybody to think that everybody in the audience is invited to Ed Paisel's.
No, I'm not, no, I'm talking.
I am not responsible for inviting anyone to this, to this party. South Suburban invited to call and find out about this event. Please, I don't want it to get out that I told her a way they can go to Ed Paisel's event.
No.
Sure, the seats are limited and from what I understand, the reservations need to be made by January 30th. But again, trustee Burgess, if you would like to attend, I'm sure if you call South Suburban Mayor's and Managers, first thing tomorrow, they'll find a way to pay you.
Okay, I'm.
There is no cost to the people to participate because the municipalities and other organizations that Ed Paisel, because he was involved in a lot of organizations, are all contributing toward his farewell and his gift. So please.
No, I'm just saying, for you to put this out here, I'm sure you knew at least a week ahead of, ahead of time and you could have, somebody could have mentioned it last week.
It's not, I'm not the person.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not going back and forth. I just asked a question. And the last question, Mayor, and I don't know who, who's supposed to answer this one. I've been asking this for over a month. And as far as the breakdown for the levy that we levy, how do we determine how much money goes to whatever department it goes to? And that's something that I was just wondering, I still haven't, let's go back to the first one. Does anyone here know how much money that we took out of the water fund? And if we did, who voted on that? As far as taking it out, who voted on that? Because it had to be, it should be somebody to vote on that. And when was that vote taken? Was it consensus? Because there was no, we didn't have a board meeting, but I'm sure we took money out of the water fund to pay this accounts payable. We just didn't come up with these numbers and we didn't have this much money in our coffers. So it had to come out of the water fund. So again, how much money was it and who voted to extract that kind of money from the water fund?
Well, I'm sure if any money was taken out of the water fund, which I can't give you the exact amounts, I don't know.
Does anybody here know?
Trustees would have been contacted and asked for permission, so.
So that's what I'm asking, was there any money taken out of the water fund to pay this accounts payable?
I'm sure, I'm sure there was.
Yes.
The only thing I know for certain, and this is something that we've stated in the past, is when you look at the front page and it says the admin retro pay, it was already telling us that that would be about $50,000 and that that would be taken out of the water fund for the December 22nd payroll. That's the only thing that I know for certain. As far as any other payroll, I don't know. And again, I'm sorry, and the retro pay for the police. When they talked about all the retro pay from the contract signings and everything, that's what was told to this board before, was the amount was around $50,000. I don't, Mohan didn't have the exact amount at that point in time, but he stated that that would have to be borrowed from the water fund. I don't know of anything else.
Right. And now, I did find that out, that's why I didn't, I didn't say the retro pay. I was saying accounts payable. The retro pay, we talked about that from the Public Works and Administration and from the police. I did ask the mayor that, at that time, was that coming out of the water fund? And he said yes. I'm talking about everything minus that, 717,000. I know we didn't have that in our general fund, so I just, I'm asking how much of the, minus the retro pay, the rest of it, of the payroll and a regular accounts payable, came out, how much did we have to extract from the water fund to make these payments? Because, I mean, we're getting ready to vote on something. I would like to know where the money came from. I'm not going to vote to, to pay something and I don't know where the money came from. It could have came out of the account that we're not even supposed to touch. So I just wanted to find out how much of the water fund, they say we're not supposed to touch, but it would be nice to have something for a record to state that at this particular time that we took X amount of money out of the water fund and keep a, keep a running total, how much we do owe the water fund maybe one day, who knows? But at least we can have a running total, how much money we took out to, to, to make obligations with the accounts payable. So to vote on something that I don't know where the money came from, I know you've asked a lot of questions, Madam Clerk asked questions about if you vote no on something, you have a reason. I do have a reason. I want to know how much money we took out to make this happen. And if we did take money out of the water fund, who authorized that? We did talk about the retro pay, but the rest of it, who authorized that money to be taken out of the water fund? Because we should, as our accountants told us, when we take money out of the water fund, it should be documented by a vote of who voted yes or no. But it's something that you can go back on and say, okay, they took this out, these trustees voted on it, and that's it.
Trustee.
I think, first of all, you should have got a cash accounts balance sheet, which tells you exactly where the money came from. If you look at it.
Yes, I do.
That's 308,642.82. Equals the January 24th payout of 308,642.82.
Okay.
And then, again, this is for two accounts payable, so you would have the same thing for the last accounts payable.
Okay, but it's, I, I, I could, it's right here. Water fund, how much we have in the water fund. Does it say, at the bottom says accounts payable being paid and the water fund, it said it was 49,400.
Okay.
So all we took out from the, from the water fund was 49,000 to pay 700,000?
Says all funds, is there a general fund, 152,000, waste manager, 52,000? It spells it right up.
Okay, so that, that's the question I asked. So you're saying that we took a water sewer, which is a water fund, $60,000, 67,000.
Okay.
So the rest of this money out of that, we, and that was, that's basically the, that was the retro pay, it was about 67. So the rest of this money came out of general fund, which if I look at this, I don't see it adding up.
The payroll, okay. So if you look at your accounts payable, payroll of 717,000, that's broken down by all those different months of, or all those different payroll weeks, that's something different. Okay, the only thing I can speak is to the retro pay that Mohan stated was about $50,000 coming out of the water.
No, it was 67. He said, it was 67.
Okay. So that's, that's the only thing I know for certain from the water fund and, or that would deal with the 717,000. To ask what happened with the rest of the accounts payable, that 308,000, that's what this breakdown is for, that you see at the bottom of the.
That was the accounts payable, yes.
Right.
Okay. But I'm asking, when you add, when you, okay, we, I'm just going with payroll, I'm not even, I haven't even started with the accounts payable, I'm going with payroll. Payroll for these last times since we haven't, since there's been a meeting, that's back in December. Since that time, we've had two, three payrolls. We've had three payrolls. They tallied, and I'm not talking about the retro pay, I'm talking about the payroll. They tallied some 500 and some thousand, almost 600,000. Where did we get this money from and how much did we take out of our water fund? That's simple, that's all I wanted to know. Because you're asking to have something to be, just taken out. You vote, we're voting right now to pay, pay, to pay this right here. I just want to know, it's paid, payroll is paid, I understand that. We can't take it back. I just want to know where we got the money. That was, that's the easiest question. Where and how much of this payroll did we take and use from the water fund? That's all I'm asking. I'm not questioning whether or not we're going to pay it, it's paid, we can't, I'm not going to ask for checks back. I just want to know what we used to pay this and who authorized to extract the money from the water fund. I just, that's all I have.
Well, you've got normal payroll, we make normal payroll based off where we're getting. And we talked about the retro pay for Public Works Administrator, Administration, and retro pay for police officers. That came up to be approximately 210, 20, 30, 40, 200, about 250,000 of that 717, or 17,000. We know for sure that money came out of water fund, which we talked about. The retro pay would be paid out of water fund.
Wait a minute, Mayor, wait a minute, now, wait a minute, I'm, I'm, now, you've confused me. You said 200, first it was 67,000 of retro pay coming from the raises. Now you're telling me 200,000 is coming from retro pay?
Between two departments, three departments.
Retro pay or regular payroll?
If you look at it, it says payroll includes payroll, Public Works and Administration, retro pay.
Retro pay.
Correct. That's 183,667.
108,000.
183.
Okay.
And then you have Police Department, which was 69,837. You sure you're not getting mixed up when he says around 67,000? You weren't touched, just talking with the Police Department?
That's what we were told at the time when we were asked about that, how much would the retro pay cost the village? And it was told to us 67,000.
From the Police Department?
No, from, from the Police, the Public Works and the Administration, front office. The retro pay was that amount. That's what we were told. Now payroll, that's different. I just wanted to know where did we come up with the money for payroll? Retro pay, I understand that. Where did this money that we took out for payroll, where did we get that? And we didn't have that in the, in our, in our budget unless we took it out. Only one that had it in the budget that we had money in the budget like that was the the water sewer fund.
I understand your question, you've said it multiple times.
Okay.
Okay, so when you look at payroll, you have payroll that comes from the fire department, which is the fire fund. You've got payroll that comes from water department, that sewers, which comes from the water fund. You've got payroll that pays for administration, makes your pay as trustees, it pays for our police department.
Makes your pay too.
No, that's right.
Makes everybody's pay.
Pays for all of our pay, so that falls under administration, you know, you've got your police department and so on and so on. I think as the falls under homeland security, falls under general fund. So again, I don't have the answer, I know you've asked this question more than three times, you continue to ask. I don't have any answer for you, I just tell you this, this we have before is accounts payable, this is what was paid.
But you're asking us to vote on something that we pull out the sky. I just, before I vote on something, I want to know where the money's coming, where it came from, it's not coming, it's paid. Where did it come from? That's all I want to know.
Okay.
And that was it, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, here now we got, yes, trustee Jones.
During the break, well, about the December 22nd, there was a consensus, and I was looking for, I asked Mohan for a voting record.
There's no vote, is there consensus?
Well, a consensus, well, we should have some type of record, who gave their approval to spend money.
To like make payroll, things like that?
Yes. And I just never, I never received it, and I asked numerous times.
Okay, for that, around the December 22nd timeframe?
Well, anytime we have any consensus, any records.
Usually when there's no meetings, if we now need to make payroll, Mohan's sitting out. Mohan's very good at keeping notes, so as trustee...
I asked him of it and I didn't get it, so.
I'll find out, because I know he's very good at it, because especially when it came to this one, I would not approve payroll until we had consensus for the board. So, because I didn't want anyone to suddenly make a payroll. I think you might have gave your consensus to make that one.
If we have consensus, you had to have somebody's name there. You had to just say, you had to ask somebody, okay, fine. If you asked me, okay, if I'm one of them, then put that down. Whoever the other two or three trustees that gave the consensus, it should be duly noted. That's a matter of public record. Even though it was a consensus, it's a matter of public record, who gave the consensus to extract this money from that account? Basically what I'm trying to ask. Who gave the consensus or the okay to, it's not a matter, it's very plain. Who gave the consensus to spend this kind of money and to pay these payments? I know that they're supposed to be paid, I just want to know where they came from and who gave it before I vote on something. I'm going to be perfectly clear with that. Before I vote on something, I'd like to know where the money came from and who voted to take that money from that particular account.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, here now, village clerk, please call roll.
Burges?
No.
Jones?
No.
Myers?
Yeah.
Tates?
No.
Washington House? Yes. Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Pop them off, sorry about that. All right, motion carries, ask for a motion to approve, or meeting minutes for December 13, 2016, is there a motion to approve?
So.
Yeah, motion is there second.
Second.
Yeah, motion is second, any questions or comments? Here now, village clerk, please call roll.
Jones?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Tates?
No.
Washington House?
Yes.
Williamsburg, yes.
Motion carries, item C, motion to approve committee meeting minutes for January 17, 2017, is there a motion to approve?
So.
Yeah, motion is there second. Motion is second, any questions or comments? Here now, village clerk, please call roll.
Myers?
Yes.
Tates?
No.
Washington House?
Yes.
Williamsburg, yes. Burges?
No.
Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item D, motion to approve license agreement for access to grade crossing data from CN Railroad, is there a motion to approve?
So.
Yeah, motion is there second. Yeah, motion is second, any questions or comments? Here now, village clerk, please call roll.
Tates?
Yes.
Washington House?
Yes.
Williamsburg, yes. Burges?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item E, motion to approve BOR 14230 resolution for maintenance of streets and highways by municipality under Illinois Highway Code, is there a motion to approve?
So.
Yeah, motion is there second.
Second.
Yeah, motion is second, any questions or comments? Here now, village clerk, please call roll.
Washington House?
Yes.
Williamsburg, yes. Burges?
Yes.
Jones? Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Tates?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item F, motion to approve BOR 09111 resolution for improvements by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code, is there a motion to approve?
So.
Yeah, motion is there second.
Second.
Yeah, motion is second, any questions or comments? Here now, village clerk, please call roll.
Williamsburg, yes. Burges?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Tates?
Yes.
Washington House?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item G, motion to approve BOR 14231 municipal estimate of maintenance costs, is there a motion to approve?
So.
Yeah, motion is there second.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Here now, village clerk, please call roll.
Burges?
Yes.
Jones? Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Tates?
Yes.
Washington House?
Yes.
Williamsburg, yes.
Motion carries. Item H, motion to approve BOR 05512 preliminary construction engineering services agreement for mortar, fuel, tax funds, is there a motion to approve?
So.
Yeah, motion is there second. Yeah, motion is second, any questions or comments? Here now, village clerk, please call roll.
Jones?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Tates?
Yes.
Washington House?
Yes.
Williamsburg, yes.
Motion carries. Item I, motion to approve resolution of the village of Sock Village Cook in Will County honoring Edward W. Pazel with an honorary street designation, is there a motion to approve?
So.
Yeah, motion is there second. Yeah, motion is second, any questions or comments?
Question.
Trustee Washington.
You have to be a, how many terms do you have to serve to get a village sign?
Well, I think he's, I think he served enough.
No, I'm just asking.
No, there's no actual policy, but the practice has been agreed.
So if you serve for three terms, you get a village sign?
Yes.
Okay.
He served for a total of four, if you count him being a trustee also. He was a trustee for one term and a mayor for three.
Okay.
I don't know how many you have to do to get a village. You have to get the funding. Maybe that's why they need somebody.
All right, any other questions? Here now, village clerk, please call roll.
Myers?
Yes.
Tates?
Yes.
Washington House?
Yes.
Williamsburg, yes. Burges?
Yes.
No.
Motion carries. Item J, motion to approve the sale or disposition of surplus property miscellaneous motor vehicles, is there a motion to approve?
So.
Yeah, motion is there second.
Second.
Yeah, motion is second, any questions or comments?
Question.
Trustee. Trustee Tates.
As I stated earlier, I provide the chief with information concerning disposal of vehicles, and you indicated that this is an auction. The company that I gave to him assessed the vehicles and they buy the vehicles, so it's not an auction with this company that I gave him. So I respectfully do not agree with this format of having an auction instead of just being able to receive a flat agreed upon rate.
All right, thank you trustee, any other questions or comments?
Question.
Trustee Jones.
From the revenue generated from the sales, is this money earmarked for specifics or what are we supposed to do with it?
Well, the municipality, we're going to spend it, okay there. I don't know if it costs. Yeah, usually it's going to generate, I mean, police car falls under general fund, so there are police vehicles, so it's more likely it's going to go into the general fund. Police cars were bought through the general fund, which is, all right. Any other questions or comments? Here now, village clerk, please call roll.
Tates?
No.
Washington House?
Yes.
Williamsburg, yes. Jones?
Yes.
Burges?
We didn't forget anyone, did we? Motion carries. Item seven, miscellaneous comments from the mayor and board of trustees, start with trustee Myers tonight.
Just a couple of things. Number one, I'd like to get clarification on using the Sock Village logo on the campaign materials. I was always told we couldn't do that, even as sitting elected officials, so if we could, if anybody knows, if you could look into that, I would greatly appreciate that. Also, the second item, the bank robberies, I know you mentioned that before, and I asked a question about it at the bank, because I know before there used to be a security guard at the bank, and I guess I didn't realize that the security guard was taken out when US Bank took over. So I had asked about that, I guess I didn't realize the timeframe. So I'm in the process, I've requested the information for contact to corporate for US Bank, and once I'm getting that, I will be working with Belinda to draft some sort of a letter of request for, to kind of, for them to change their policy on that due to the fact that we've had the high increase in crime and robberies that we've had at the bank. After speaking with her, we thought it might be a good idea if, once the letter was drafted, we could have copies here in case any residents wanted to sign the letter, and that way, once we got a bulk of the letters coming from the citizens of Sock Village, we could mail that to corporate and asking them that we request them to reverse that decision just so we could have our employees be safe. I don't know if you guys know this, but there are, some of the employees at the bank are Sock Village residents, and so they would be able to sign that too. So this is something that we talked about, we thought it might help, I mean, you know, corporate is corporate, they make their own decisions, but I thought this was something that, if it's coming from a bunch of residents, it might make them change their mind. So I just wanted to let the board and the residents know that that's something that I'm working on with the bank. And lastly, at last week's meeting, there was a couple comments that were made by trustee Tates, and him and I had maybe a difference of opinion on what happened away. And so he asked me to provide that proof, and I have that proof. I've spent the last week going through two years of minutes to find the exact dates and times for those things. First of all, regarding never making any comments about the deficiencies in the audit, I would refer trustee Tates to the minutes of March 8, 2016, April 5, 2016, and April 12. All three of those, all three of those dates and times, you did talk about the deficiencies in the audit. Probably most concerning is the comment made that there was never any comment by trustee Tates in any derogatory fashion about student government day. And I want to just state, looking at the minutes, and I do have a copy of the minutes here for anybody who would like to see them, for the January 19 meeting, trustee Tates agreed with trustee Myers who stated that 14% of the eighth graders can't read. That was the report that they received from their intergovernmental meeting, and that was the comment. I mentioned that we had found many errors in the judging the essays throughout the years and that we had reached out to the school board to help us judge those essays so that they could see firsthand where the problem was. And I had asked trustee Tates at that time, since he was working with the intergovernmental committee, this may be an area to be addressed. He stated at that time that that was not something that he was going to pursue, but that having this program is putting the students at a disadvantage because we are putting them on display for them to not be able to read. He did say at that time that he wasn't their parent, but that he was embarrassed, and he was embarrassed for them. Those comments were then taken to the school board and falsely stated that I said those things. I never once said that I was embarrassed about a student, I never said that a student couldn't read, and I never said that we shouldn't put them on display. So those are the derogatory comments. Again, I have the minutes for anybody who would like to see them, the hand motions in the audience, if that means you want to read them, they're right here. And I also, for anybody, I know that there's been talk about the minutes are false and the minutes aren't exact, so for anybody who has any question about it, I have it on recording right here from the video, so anybody can come and listen to it. It's about a minute long, a minute and 11 seconds. I have no problem playing it right now if anybody wants to hear it.
No.
But if anybody wants it, it's right on my phone and you can hear the words verbatim. So, again, maybe we should read, look at the thing about the word never and say that we don't do things, and I hear, you know, liar, liar, and not even, but again, if you'd like to listen to them, just ask them, you know, please, right here. That's all I have.
Thank you trustee, trustee Meyer.
I have just one question, and Mr. Mayor, I want to ask it to the director of Homeland Security. On page four, no, I'll take that back, page three, didn't put my glasses on. We installed a brand new siren, could you enlighten us where we installed a siren? It says, I tell you, we paid 17, $1,700 for a brand new siren.
Okay, supposedly it was installed at Windpack, Port of Paterson.
So it's over by Windpack area? Okay, thank you.
Glad you knew the answer to that one. All right, is that it?
Yes.
All right, trustee Tates. I have no comment, thank you trustee. Trustee Jones?
Once again, open gym this Saturday from 11 to 2:30.
Thank you trustee, trustee Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just again, about the concert coming up on March the 10th, if you want to know the date, the flyers are in the back, where the flyers are coming, it's just 11 in the back giving information about the concert. Again, like I said, we are very excited about it. If you all want to be on it, we're only taking so many acts on the program because we don't want it to be too long, so if you're interested, you need to let us know as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you trustee, trustee Burges.
Yes, Mayor, I just wanted to ask you for the record, when can I expect to find out about what we asked about as far as the money? Because that's what we're here for as far as trustees, to make sure that the money is spent and make sure that we have a record how it was spent. Can we go back and, you know, to find out that we don't have this amount of money in the water fund due to whatever, that's how we can find out. If we don't document it, then we, right where we at right now, don't know where it came from and how all of a sudden it's gone. So I would like to find out from you, Mayor, I see Mr. Ferrin is not here, so, because if I ask him, he's going to say, ask the mayor, and then the mayor's got to direct me, so is it possible that you can direct him to direct Mr. Mohan to find out where,